Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular board meeting of Dundee Township for July 2025. I call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Dave.
Here.
Trustee Drake.
Here.
Trustee Bixler.
Here.
Trustee Harney.
Here.
Supervisor Shaw.
Here.
I ask you all rise and join me in the pleasure of the regions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. You get three minutes. Um, news, is that what I was looking on? At the very first meeting of this board on May 21st, 2025, the board was asked to repoint Mr. McKinsey's, Mr. Kinsey's law firm to be the council for the township and to approve the terms of payment. As part of the motion, it was stated that the trustees had all been, had all been sent a copy of the agreement to review, to which the trustees stated they had not, in fact, been given a copy of the contract. Instead of tabling the issue until the trustees could be provided with a copy of the contract to review, they were told that it was okay for them to vote for it without seeing it because it was the same as before, even though none of them, except Trustee Harney, had access to the previous contract. At the same time, at the same meeting, the board was asked to approve township policies. Again, it was said that they had been given the policies to review beforehand when they had not, in fact, been given them. Again, the motion was not tabled until the trustees could have been provided with access to the factors that they were being asked to approve. Instead, they were still asked to approve the policy, even though they had not seen it before, beforehand, without explanation. All of the trustees agreed to approve the policies of Mr. Kinsey's retainers. Not a single one of them challenged the issue of being asked to vote on something they had not seen or heard tabled by the table. That's a question. In addition, at that same meeting, Trustee Harney hilariously amended the agenda to remove a presentation that mounted up at the ME, A, a local group that supports the township's open spaces, having a proposal submitted to the board and investment funds in the amount of $10,000, transparent dollars for open space work. Trustee Harney hilariously removed the presentation and instead said that she would discuss the proposals during the trustee report. Even though during the report, she stated that there was a contract, a proposal, and a flow chart that we all had the right to see, and that the work to be done with helping in millions of dollars of revenue, none of the documents, nor the names of the grants that were being applied for, have been disclosed or posted as part of the meeting. At another meeting, Trustee Harney hilariously amended the agenda to make the motions that the board approved the note of bill related to open spaces in the amount, in the amount of the $10,000. That bill was also cast upon question or objections to the violation of the open spaces. Then on June 26th, two of the trustees called a hurried special meeting on the agenda for that meeting. It was amendment of five township policies, policies that presumably were approved by the board at the May 24th, 2025 meeting. The proposed amendments were not supposed to start the meeting. In fact, it appeared that none of the members of the board themselves saw the amended policies until clearly an hour before the meeting. At that time, each trustee was updated on the amendments individually by council, all except for Board Chair Shaw, who was not informed of the changes at all before the meeting. It turns out that apparently, one or more of the policies were altered to try to take away some supervisor Shaw's powers, and were enjoyed by previous supervisors, including Trustee Harney, and she was supervisor. Do you have a couple more minutes? Oh, yeah, three minutes. Three minutes.
It's up to you, because you're going to let everybody do it if you do it.
Yeah, how many do we have?
Well, we have one.
Okay, go ahead. Um, let's see. During the meeting with the policy amendment, the five, the five and finally, you know, the agenda. A motion to amend the policies was made in a second session, but when the board was cast, there was any discussion of the amendments, not a single trustee said a word. Now, one word is to what the amendments will be, many amendments are being made alive. All of us in attendance were in shock. The people that we supported, who were thrilled when they were elected, didn't seem to give a damn about informing the public about what they were about to do. This township has been run for many years by people with their own agendas and who were out of their way and have to be transparent in the form of to the people who put them in office. Now it appears that the people who we elected to represent, except for several who were handling the issue of transparency, is one of the main platform points, and now going either way to allow the various types of conduct that we put them on, the board to change. I know that the majority of the board, of course, may be from people who are new to public service, but there was one member of the board who knows very well that some of her conduct is inappropriate, who seems to be to have orchestrated or supported one of the actions of the board that are just playing out. This board has been operation for a couple of months now, and I know that I and others have spoken to you about protections and behaviors, and nothing seems to be changing. We hired you to work as a house meeting speaker, and right now we aren't seeing any conduct different from your predecessors, and frankly, that's the question. Thank you.
My turn.
I'm Jane.
Hello, good evening. This one is tough, hey, from a couple of hours. What did you believe it's come out that late? Um, just a couple of comments at the last board meeting. There was a comment made regarding the mental health fund and how much money was in the mental health fund, and how much would be spent by the time the levy comes around in December. Um, the last mental health fund, uh, fund that we have has over about $770,000 in it currently, and only obligated to spend a $430,000 more. And so you'll probably have with new revenue coming in, uh, probably $600,000 at the end of this year before your funding starts. So theoretically, you could fund the whole of the, uh, mental health funding without even levying any, like, not that I'm asking you to do that, but, um, there's not a huge need for additional funds. And then on the agenda, I did see a website redesign proposal that was coming up. Um, there were some concerns about the website and not being able to post packets. And I'm not sure, um, I looked at the mental health board packet, and pretty much their entire packet and information is attached to one document. So even though you're limited to four, you pretty much have to put out an agenda and have, um, an additional packet that probably doesn't really have to be used to attach. So rather than spend additional money, which we spent within the last two years on the website, I would like you to just consider that aspect. And then I know that we have a proposal for adjusted general assistance, and part of that proposal includes library services, senior services, additional information for, I'm assuming, the, uh, core seniors and the people that are on GA. Some of the law that was written, I think, are designed for places that don't have a separate levy for libraries, don't have a separate levy for Park District that has a senior services. So some of those services are being provided already. So I'm not sure how much supplemental, how you kind of track eligibility for those programs, and if you can fund a lot of public, uh, uh, public assisted funds, how that would be managed. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, I'll close this portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is presentation. This evening, we have Civic Plus, Mr. Stephen. Thank you so very much for driving all the way from Louisville. And, uh, since you are heading out to Michigan, if you'd like to exit after this, you can.
I thought we were going to get birthday. Thank you, Supervisor Shaw. Board members, my name is Stephen French. I am a solutions engineer with Civic Plus. Civic Plus is a company headquartered in, uh, the Little Apple. Uh, it is in, uh, Manhattan, Kansas, not Manhattan, New York, it's in the home of Kansas State. But we have over a thousand employees scattered around the United States. Couple of weeks ago, probably a couple of months ago, we started to meet with Supervisor Shaw and her staff to discuss two, uh, two needs that were, were, uh, important to them, related to public transparency and the compilation of agenda packets for, uh, all of your different boards and committee meetings. At the request of Supervisor, we're here to, uh, present and, uh, discuss a proposal that we have provided to you. And this proposal has multiple pieces to it, but it was really centered on two main pillars. The first pillars that we have been asked to present is the replacement of the existing township's website. Our proposal would construct totally new and redeveloped site, based on direction from the board, staff members, and more importantly, from the residents. Not only would a new website be created with this proposal, but additional features would be added to it, such as ADA accessibility, using our, what we call our Audio Live solution, a new web application or an app that would be included, as well as chatbot. Chatbot would, is an AI tool that can answer questions that visitors would enter into your website. Not only are those answers AI, uh, generated, but they could be submitted and responded to in multiple languages. The second pillar of our proposal includes the implementation of a web postage solution that will assist staff with the generation of agendas, agenda packets in minutes in the software. This software is called Select, and will drastically reduce the staff time associated with manual copying, compilation, and generation of your paper-based agenda packets. This software can not only be used for the township board, but an unlimited number of other boards or committees that you may have here in the township. More importantly, Select, the name of this agenda management program, can automate the process, which would publish these documents to your website, email information to board members, as well as disseminate this information electronically to your residents. Both products that I am presenting to you can also be expanded with additional features that the township may want to include in the future. Items such as mass notifications to your website, adding electronic voting, or including information on a large monitor or a television in your chambers can expand and improve your agenda management experience. Civic Plus offers over 30 different solutions, ranging from asset management, parts and recreation software, licensing, 311, and other examples that we can discuss if needed at a later date. We feel that we have not only provided a suite of products that addresses your existing needs here at the township, but have provided these products at a very competitive price. Our package proposal for all of the products that you have requested, we have waived the first year fees on all of those products except for the website. This reduces your original cost from nearly $79,000 to $50,000 per year one. The year one fees for Select, the Agenda Management Program, Audio I, Civic Plus Media, and the Marketplace have, have all been waived in hopes of your signature. I understand that I have a 15-minute time limit, and I want to save some of my time to address any questions or any issues that the board, or really any residents have regarding this proposal. I will also be able to leave videos for you that you can watch at your convenience that addresses additional information about our products that I may have not covered this evening. I thank you for the invitation to be here at your township board meeting to address this, and I thank you for your continued service to me.
I have one question about the ADA part. Can you elaborate on that? Why is it necessary?
Why is it necessary? In, in short, it's required, but in, I want to say, in, in general, uh, it is, it is almost a necessity in, in our times to not only provide those who are able with access to your electronic information, but also provide them that information to everyone in your township, regardless of ability, whether it is making sure the color contrast is accurate on your website, whether your attachments are compliant with certain access to maybe a, a screen reader, et cetera. So I think it's very important that all of your documents, not just your website, but your agenda and management program contains some kind of an ADA accessibility tool, so everyone in the township can either have these files read to them through our software, or they can see them in a, in appropriate manner.
So they can be read to them?
Absolutely. The public portal, the, the information that we would automatically project to your website, whether it's a new website or your existing website, is, has an HTML version, so that if you have a resident that relies on, let's say, a screen reader, that screen reader will go through your agenda packet and read that information to that resident.
That's all for me. Okay, does the board have any questions?
Um, I, um, so this all sounds amazing. There's a lot of great things, but we are a small government unit. We don't, you know, we don't serve the parks or the library. Um, we have three subboards. And, um, I'm wondering how much of this is à la carte, so to, so to speak, to like, do the new site? But, you know, I was trying, just trying to find the, um, I had the thing on my phone and I lost it. Um, and I know that there were some options that were lower. But, um, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out if we could take another look later and minimize what would be offered, because again, we don't really need, you know, the chatbot. We do need the ADA. You know, the select sounds great, but I think that just a simple space to post the agenda in minutes and everything would do. So I mean, like, I feel like there's a lot of great options on the, um, estimate that I saw that just are for government units that are bigger than us, like, like a bigger town like Schaumburg or, or whatever, but.
And, and we have, we have, um, customers from around the country. Um, I, in fact, met with the city of Vernon, California this afternoon. They have a population of 112. And I understand your concern. I, when I was started as a elected official, it was, I was on a township board in Michigan where I live, um, and certainly fought with, is this, is this really a necessity? Not only can you post your agendas and your packets to your website, but using our software, it's going to drastically reduce the time that's required for your staff to create this event. So instead of them making copies for you and updating those copies and re-updating those copies, you could receive your agenda packet on your smartphone in a, in a mobile optimized solution. And if there are updates, you would immediately see them, and staff would not have to print out papers. They wouldn't have to waste their time calling AD, things like that. So I understand your concerns about cost, and there are certain things that you could remove from this contract, certainly. But do note that our, the way we priced this proposal is kind of a, a bulk feature where we can then waive certain things that we've done. So I understand, but I also want to impress the time savings and the efficiencies that the township will see in simply creating this, this information, as well as then disseminating it automatically to your residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I think our current website is ADA compliant, though. I mean, there's an option to have it read to you, do all of the, it has a dyslexia option even. So I mean, that, we already have that feature, so as far as that, we don't, the only thing we'd really be doing is being able to generate packets. Correct?
The, the website is not necessarily tied to the agenda management program. So we can take your materials that were created for your meetings and post them to your website using our public portal, and we would just embed that public portal into your site.
How much would it cost just to do the website, just to replace the website? And how does that happen with the content? The content is generated through us, is that not correct?
The content, the content, excuse me, would be entirely generated by you. So you would design the content. That's what takes up really the amount of time it does to, to implement a new site. I don't have that cost in front of me, and because it was a package deal, I really can't say it would be this amount of money, because we are providing this pool and giving you those savings based on the total package. We can certainly follow up with a cost just for the website.
Thank you. Oh, wait, wait, one more thing. The yearly fees after that, what, remind, it was at 52, between 52 and 35,000 depending on.
Yeah, it was a little lower than 50.
Okay.
Uh, 50 was the first year, and that went down from that, because the first year, you're going to have the, the implementation fees, the training of staff, the training of your board members. You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions? All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Stephen. Um, we will move to the next item on the agenda. I will close this part. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Kias, county board member, Mr. Kias. You're up, sir.
Code deputy tonight.
What?
Said code deputy tonight.
Oh, right, I know.
He's been doing a great job, by the way.
Yeah.
Did a, uh, a, uh, out in the Lake Marion area. Me and our, uh, code violation team, uh, we went out, so about two weeks ago, and scouted the area. He actually had gone out first and identified the areas with potential violations. We took our team out, uh, I spent the morning with him. We identified it, like, identified something like eight or nine different areas, uh, properties that had, uh, obvious violations, and we followed up on those. So it's been a long time coming to get that kind of support, and so the code violation teams are really good for the county. If you see something in an unincorporated area, by all means, let me know about it, and I will get it to the code violation team. As a matter of fact, I got a note from trustee from, uh, Harvestville this morning, it's pictures, uh, in an unincorporated area next to their, uh, uh, village. And, uh, I was able to report that it is, is definitely a violation, we'll be having a code violation team, uh, follow up on that. Uh, screw things up, get things that are dangerous, um, get it fixed, and, um, I think we could have one where they're storing tires and things which would be a health and safety thing, uh, from skinnos, vectors, things like that. So that was item number one. Good, glad you wrapped that up. Uh, I just have a few other things that are happening with the county. The, uh, county has started a smart sprinkler pilot program, uh, for those, now, for, for those that are, have a, especially high sprinkler, uh, or a water bill for the month, a monthly water bill. It actually is going to apply, uh, starting for, uh, users that, uh, spend over $400 on watering for whatever reason. And, uh, what will, the program does is it will provide a free smart sprinkler device in exchange for, uh, using, gathering the data, so we can, as a program, we can find out just how effective it is. It may be, uh, because we're looking at, uh, waters, uh, declining water sources of, of our entire county, including the township, uh, from our wells. Uh, that has started, uh, if you have, I can give you more information on that. Sheriff Sarah Hinshaw is our sustainable village manager, and she's, uh, in charge of that, but I've got a number if you want to study it out. Uh, we do have in King County from the health department, uh, we have lists of, uh, cooling stations, uh, and that can be, those lists are available on either King County Connects or at the, uh, from the health department. Uh, so maybe today, hopefully maybe it's like the last day for a while, a couple of meetings, but it's been, it's really hot, so, uh, that, for those people that don't have any cool, or they need to have a facility to get to, this will be a list. It's easy to find throughout county. We do have a rental utility, uh, rural and utility assistance program. I think I brought you the guy suppliers about that. It's, uh, the idea is it's homeless prevention program. Uh, we got a federal grant, uh, which runs out at the end of July, so we're pushing it really hard. We still have money left. Uh, we offer financial assistance to residents, uh, behind our rent and, or, and or utilities. And the, the assistance may include up to 12 months of past new rent plus three months of future rent, up to 12 months of overdue utility bills, uh, and also for security deposits. Uh, the, the focus is to, uh, find those people, uh, and have them apply that have gotten into some sort of maybe financial difficulty at a particular time, and they're a threat of being evicted. And this will get them through that period so that we can avoid having homeless families and, uh, and fight the homeless problem that we have. On the forest reserve side, uh, we have, uh, I hope you get a chance to ride out into the rural forest reserve. Last Tuesday, we passed a improvement to the trails out there, the last for phase two. You may have been out there on some of the trails, ride the bike out the forest reserve, and it's a little gravelly and loose. I will be redesigning those problem areas in rural famine farm, uh, forest reserve, and that should take us through the summer. Hopefully, we'll have that by winter time, and some extra paved trails up there. We'll arrive, and then there's like eight months of trails, so we can spend some time out there. Uh, we are having a, uh, our next recycling event is July 19th. It's down in St. Charles. I know it's kind of a run, but we have people from all over the county, and actually some other people from other counties. Uh, we'll be doing, it's called our Extravaganza, starts at 8:00 AM and goes till noon. Uh, it is, uh, it's St. Charles at the cert clerk's office, right there on, uh, between 38 and 64, uh, and, uh, and Randall Road. Uh, they will be taking electronics, clothing, textiles, books, bikes, paint, and aerosols, child car seats and strollers, smoke and carbon monoxide, alarms fluorescent, LED folds, six-pack rings that hold beverages, and inkjet cartridges. There will be a fee for, uh, there will be a fee for, uh, monitors and TV sets. Uh, so it's right here on, you just pull up, they'll pull it out, the volunteers will pull it out of the car and take care of it for you. That's our big, uh, recycling stuff, the Extravaganza for the year. Uh, of course, we do have the other, the other site up at the West Dundee, uh, Public Works. It's open weekly, but it doesn't take all of these things. So if you have something that's, uh, of importance you want to recycle, that would be a bit close to getting on, uh, this coming Saturday, which I can. And that's my update. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, Assessor? Assessor?
I'm, I'm feeling, uh, Mr. Kias about the paved trails of rural, um, and you were talking about this real boost speed gravel. We'll get the ball.
That's right.
Yeah. You want to tell the grid?
Maybe you did that.
Uh, good evening, um, just kind of give you a little update. We just published, or we, uh, King County just published, uh, our assessments to the David Hill that was, uh, on 7/15, so two days ago, I guess Tuesday. What that means is, uh, any assessment changes, my office, Assessor's office, and related to any assessment would be published in that. What that means is any assessment changes, my office, assessor's office, and related to any assessment would be published in that newsletter. That, they would also receive a notice in the mail that their assessment has changed. Otherwise, like most of us, we will not do any notification in the mail or any other way other than our website. And the assessment has increased nine point four two percent. That's a factor that's going to apply to all the properties in the township. It's just kind of the way things work in Illinois. Most times, kind of get it off, try to thought here, but most jurisdictions will send out notices to all property owners every four years. King County, they do not do that. They only send out a notice, not a notice to your house if the assessor changes that assessment. In kind of effect or in township wide equalization factor, you will not get a notice. So it's kind of a key of mind of King County, that's the way they do it. And they're abiding by the law. Most of us know Mark Hough's law. So I'm sorry to interrupt here. So the, we were published on July 15th. The appeal deadline is August 14th. What that means is there's thirty day window which anybody can call assessor's office. We invite people to call us to talk about their assessments. If you over assess, it will be assessed with them. If we cannot come to an agreement, and by agreement, if we do change the value, we will give them stipulation that this time of year, this is what we're going to reduce the assessment to. That's something I've been living on, given our sector. So if we cannot come to an agreement with the tax care, they can then still appeal to King County if they want to. And until August 14th to do so. And once they do appeal to the board, then there's still another chance that we could possibly resolve the issue of the assessment. Before the actual court review. Typically this time of year, we're not too busy on residential side. The market's still very up. Surprising. It's still going up, but we're still behind because it's a three-year assessment ratio, assessment side that we use. So we're still behind. So we're not getting a lot of residential calls. We're getting a lot of commercial calls as usual. Every year, commercial tax returns contact us. Requesting adjustments. The sales ratio studies are based on residential sales. Ninety-nine percent of the sales, the state ratio studies, cause there's not commercial profits. Two of the handles, two of the markets. We have to live by that and adjust accordingly. So we do get a lot of appeals from the commercial tax representatives. We get especially every three years. That's good like that. We're also working with the seniors still, just a few are a bit like that. We usually, we usually help two hundred to two hundred and fifty seniors fill out their senior fees applications and run them down to California. Just a funny little, little note about the truck, the new truck that we purchased. The next day I went out, got the check, got the check and went out to get the car. The old car had prayed in and all the holders have been on the garage. We had a storm there, if you remember. There was a, literally an empty garage. They do for the road district, not here, but they came out and rescued us. So it's very, actually. The truck is muddy already. They took it out to new construction. Something new houses up on the con, it's a place. That's all I have. Any questions?
Do you get to clean it?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that for us. Still waiting for plates.
All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, your report.
Yes, on June twenty-first, I went to the township village clerks association meeting. Found it very informative, very helpful. That's all I have to add.
Okay, the next one. Trustees, anyone? Report? Okay. All right. So we will go with open space? We have Kirby, our foreman.
Hey, nice to meet you, Billy. Thanks for having me here tonight. So, you know, open space conservation work this time of year. I'll just run through my report for you real quick. This time of year just means a lot of weed controls. Supper time, the mid, the storms were happening. All the good native stuff is exploding in color. You've probably seen that in some of our prairies around and the prairies really starting to wake up this time of year. But the non-native stuff and the invasive stuff is always, you know, tenfold above that. So that's just a lot of our work over this past month is kind of doing, keeping up on things. Some of the pictures here in the report, you know, doing follow-up work in areas we've cleared. Up at the raceway is one of these pictures here on New Year's Day clearing. So getting, you know, the first phase of clearing is just that, just the first phase. There's always weed seed in that soil bank and there's stuff just populating it from other vectors around the area. So it's just a constant follow-up maintenance to keep that stuff from regrowing in as we try to introduce native seed and native plants in some of these areas and restore those spots. Trails are another big thing. A lot of people ask why spray trails? Well, trails, you know, the weeds grow within the trails too. And, and, you know, one of the things we don't want to do as, as stewards of these, of these properties is spread the weed seed through just, you know, routine maintenance stuff like simple things like trail mowing. So we try to get the weeds off the trails too. You know, some of the species we're hitting right now, gnashweed and, you know, frack mighty, which is a big tall, you know, weapon invading grass, a lot of that, a jelkie crete. I'm sure some of you are familiar with. You know, the usual, the usual bad actors, Canada thistle, multi-floral rose, roundy bittersweet. Some pictures here from Snuppy's Prairie that show, you know, a nice cluster of beautiful yellow flowers. The death flower is just one of our top invaders. It works for tree foil. So we, you know, we try to take care of all that stuff as well. That's kind of what we've been doing over the last month. You know, sweet clover is another one that we're getting. You can get that with our mowers. You can get a handful. So a lot of options for that other than going the chemical routes. Some other things, you know, outside of conservation stuff, just doing property maintenance. So that means, you know, in this case, sprucing up the fence along, along Sneaky Hollow Road for Snuppy's Prairie. You know, that, once we get that clear away, you know, need some fence boards for rods. Those are simple things, replacing fence boards. You know, wooden posts that are rotting on some of our cable paved trailheads, you know, keeping up on bridges so people can hike safely. Improving sightlines at the raceway where trails converge with bikers and hikers. So, you know, everybody's multi-use trails are staying safe. And then just real quickly, a thing on the trails. I know we had some, some issues earlier, some infractions earlier in the year with some, some e-bikes and stuff at Dixie. Which, which ended up being really just a kind of a minor occurrence is actually just a couple of ten-year-olds that ended up meeting up. And they, they were told, fire steward, that these types of activities aren't allowed there. And she proceeded to, you know, write up a nice letter for the neighborhood, just letting people know. And usually these infractions that we have with trails are usually just localized, right? It's not like, you know, Dixie's a destination place for ATVs and, and off-road bikes. It's usually just neighborhood people. Some, some of the ATV stuff, we've had a jelkie and hound. It's usually the neighbors kind of just coming in. And once they learn or even a push letter from the supervisor or we talk to them as staff. And usually on a case-by-case basis, these things just kind of die down. We haven't had any incidents at Dixie since then. The only one that we addressed was a, you know, guy who was riding his bike through, you know, looking for his lost dog. So I know there was a lot of chatter about pedestrian mazes and bat holes and bollards and all that stuff. And I get that concern, but, you know, I think if this were just a constant overwhelming occurrence, rather than just a rare, you know, one-off here and there, can kind of be handled case by case. It just seems kind of useless to, and maybe a waste of time at this time of year with all the other conservation work we're doing to, you know, to do all these little construction projects around these trailheads with pedestrian mazes. And thinking of all the properties we have, all the trails we have, we only have one pedestrian maze. And that's at the Ranch Road Prairie entrance at Raceway. Ironically, biking is allowed at Raceway. So just, you know, while I appreciate concerns over that, you just know that we're kind of going to handle this, I think, just more on the individual basis and just kind of educating, educating these people. Like I said, usually the neighbors really seem to just kind of work. And it keeps everybody kind of happy. And, you know, we don't really have any data to support that pedestrian mazes are the end-all, be-all. We don't have to continue spending on our properties. So you can just simply go around some of the fence, you know, some of the trail bit, you know, posts that are there. If you're really determined to get into the open space, you know, with an eagle, you know, motorbike, whatever it may be. And then, so I think that's all, you know, that's all I really just wanted to address that because I know that was a discussion issue recently. And outside of that, everything's looking good. We're just keeping busy. Everything. Helper, John, who came to us. He's been a great addition to the staff. And the three of us, it's endless amounts of work. So we're just out there trying to do everything every day. Thank you so much for having me. Any questions?
Thank you, Kirby.
Thank you.
Okay, the next report will be cemetery. Benji, our assistant manager.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. Just a quick little report of the last one. We've got twelve burials, six cremations, six mowsides. Two of those cremations were in the columbarium, so they weren't in the ground. We've had ten grave sales, two of those in columbarium. And then issued six new cemetery digs. And then we've had a sales and transaction number of eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty-six. Some stuff that's been going on in cemetery, we've been serving the north half of section seventeen to open up the new half. The only thing that's left, it's about seventy-five percent completed. We need to order aluminum pinheads to basically determine what grade it is. And then the four corners of the grave. The back of the packet has the pricing for that. It's a little pricey, but tariffs recently have made the aluminum prices go up double. So it sucks. Another thing, we've got two mowers that were sent out for mechanical issues are a two thousand nine sixty-inch Toro and a twenty twenty-three Bobcat DT. We have a third mower sending pickup just for mechanical issues. They're not starting up. That one is a twenty-eleven Toro. So we currently only have two working mowers. So we're trying to do our best. We're getting all the mowing done and trying to get it done between the two of us. Our cemetery dumping site, so it's pretty much near Mexico City is where we dump all our dirt, all our rocks from the digs that we do. I guess with previous management, with the Riley Auto Parts that they were doing over there, they were allowed to come dump, which took away about ten years from our dumping space. So we're trying to determine how to either get some of that out or pretty much build to it, I guess, to try to maximize other space that we have left. And then one of our great villagers at the entrance was vandalized. I don't know if they did it last weekend or earlier this week. They're, they're, they're done with chalk. So luckily water was able to take it off and it wasn't that big of an issue. In the columbarium, there's a pretty much like a, it's like a fortress of weeds. So we've had landscaping companies out there in previous years to try to minimize the weeds or try to make it look better. You know, we've worked for so long. So me and Eric kept the solution to pretty much take out those plants that were in there and put a mulch bed and different plants that reduce the amount of weeds that grow in there. So we have another picture next after, which is the columbarium's newest one. So in that section, there's a mulch bed around those trenches with plants similar, which have minimized the weeds and it looks nicer than the other area. So that's what we plan to do for the whole outside of columbarium. Just to give it a nicer appeal or a nicer look to people when we come and we show you the columbarium or just when they come to visit. You know, it's a nice little garden. So we want to keep it nice. And weeds, they're not, they're not very perfect. Other than that, that's pretty much it. There's just pictures of the dumping site and then, so the pond, that's right next to the dumping site. So that's why we're running out of room. So there's a pond right beside it kind of. So if we continue to dump there in like five, 10 years, we're going to end up digging into that pond. So that's why it's kind of an issue here. Other than that, everything else in previous work with cemetery, the three of us are trying our best to keep it maintained and look nice for the public and for you. So I mean, if there's any other questions you guys have for me, that's all I've got for you guys.
I do, but go ahead. I have a couple of questions.
No questions, but a request that you use native plants when you realize they?
Native plants?
Native plants. Okay, yeah. Questions?
No, I just like all the rocks. I'd like to go dig through those rocks.
You're more than welcome to. I'm sure you'll help take away some space.
Do you, are you still use that thing where you dump the dirt through that filter?
Sifter?
Of the sifter and then take out the rocks?
We haven't. Open space.
Yeah, so actually, so can I chime in? So actually, I just talked to Eric about that this week. I kind of revived that. Because there's some projects where I need, I need those cobblestones.
Yeah, these are really nice rocks.
They're awesome rocks.
I was going to say.
I used to buy those cobblestones in the quarter. And I saw what the cemetery is producing. I'm like, this is great.
Yeah, no, you guys need to utilize those rocks.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure out new ways to do this.
So we're going to try and revive that separator, that, that dumpster.
And if, if nothing else, you could just advertise, you know, put it on a website that people can pick up rocks.
If in the future, if you ever wanted to sell it, I mean, that's a way to make money, you know? So there's always ways to make money. Even for us, we grow out of bygones.
Yeah.
So we, we could sit through it.
Yeah.
We could find a way to do it.
The gravel would be hard, but the rocks, the rocks are.
Those are boulders almost.
Yeah, those are really, yeah, that, that filter thing works really well.
All right, Benji. So can you tell us, why is it that we cannot get a secondary quote for the metal pins for the grave expansion project?
So we have worked and pretty much other companies and other places, we don't have a close in here. We can get them for you guys for the next meeting if you would like, but it's pretty much.
Do you have to buy one thousand one hundred and whatever all at once? Do you get a better discount? Or can you wait until maybe some of these tariffs go away and?
So with that, I'm pretty sure it is a better deal if we buy them all. I can relook that just to be sure myself. But it's just so that we can open up the whole section versus just opening up smaller sections. And, you know, one family might like the area furthest and, and if they're closest. So that's why we buy them all at once, just to open a couple of sections at once or closer than spread part, you know?
Can you also look at the aluminum grade? Because I believe that the pins have to have a certain grade. So we cannot get enough, we have to go to the same vendor?
So that, that, most pin, that company that we had also is the company that we used in the previous section of seventeen. So it would all be identical.
Yes, yeah. Okay, then what about the mower that's leaking?
That's leaking?
Leaking.
Oh, so that one was sent out. So it should be coming back within the next week or two, hopefully. We'll get updates on the other mower as well. Once they drop off one of those two mowers, we'll send out the third one to hopefully back.
They always have one of my mowers at all time.
Do they?
Yeah, always. Well, town is, yeah, always got one of our mowers there.
Perfect. That's all for me.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Last one, supervisor's report. So as far as open space goes, we paid a visit to, you know, we have a property at Open Space's Helmwood, I believe that is. So we went over to the house and we met the gentleman. And actually Maria and I showed up and, you know, just to be comfortable, we invited if somebody from Open Space was available. And actually Maria and I showed up and, you know, just to be comfortable, we invited if somebody from Open Space was available. And John and Dan happened to be in the neighborhood, so they showed up. And the gentleman could have completely said no, but he was more than welcoming. So he showed us everything. We took some pictures for upcoming maintenance. That will be the next fiscal year, but he was fantastic. He showed us around, everything was great. He always pays on time. That's just wonderful news. Besides that, I think one of the highlights for my week is when Kirby sends me, at least once a week, he'll send me a text about something that he finds at one of our properties. So I was trying to remember the names, but okay, Prairie Rose, that's one of them, okay? I think there's a Spidey Wart, if I'm not mistaken. Spider Wart, yes. I'm learning these things, but he'll send me pictures and they're amazing. They are even better now, Assessor with that phone, okay? So I love it. So thank you. So, yeah, we did a little switching with some phones, so. Besides that, Open Space, they keep in touch with me, so I actually go every morning to Schweitzer Woods, that's where our barn is. But I take my dogs out at 5:00 AM and I try to leave before they show up. Usually I, it's not because of them, but, you know, I try to leave so I can go home and get ready. But sometimes when I sleep in, I see them and, you know, it's not that I'm just dropping in on them to spy, but I do see them. They're always showing up on time and they always keep in touch with me. Same goes for the cemetery. Cemetery, everybody keeps in touch. They've got projects working right now. They do have an upcoming board meeting that has been posted downstairs, if you haven't seen it, so please look at their agenda. And in addition to that, so that's all for Open Space and Cemetery. And they did actually borrow John yesterday for helping with some mowing at our West Cemetery, so that was fantastic. The cross training really worked out. They needed help. They called in, Eric reached out to Kirby and they worked it out and it was fantastic. And that also helps us with overtime, so if they had to have one of their guys do it, then we would have had to had more overtime, but this way we're able to manage it. So that's all for that. As far as bills go, my main concern is if, as far as the policies that were in, put in place last board meeting, we are supposed to approve bills over $7,000 at every meeting. But if they are late, then we accrue a fee, so I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about items like, say, if the AC goes out on us and the tab is over $7,000, what do we do? So do we just work from home, call an emergency meeting, up until when we can have an emergency meeting? People just work at, under those conditions, so that's a concern I have. As far as EAGA goes, we were able to help one family with prevention of eviction and, oh yeah, and then Assessor and Commissioner have given us the warmest welcome, and I cannot thank them enough for that. So as Assessor mentioned, there was a tree that went down. He has the most wonderful habit of educating me on certain things that I may not know is under my purview. He never makes me feel like, you know, this is a part of your job you should know. He will tell, he called me that day and he said, hey, there's a tree down, here's the pictures. And I said, okay, so what do we do in this situation? He said, usually the supervisor takes care of it. So I told him, I said, do I just call a random company? He said, no, you could either go ahead and file a claim at Toroma or you can leverage our Commissioner's department and see what they can do. So that's exactly what I did. I called the Commissioner. He came over with his guys and they brought in a boom truck, which was fantastic. It was so enjoyable. And they took care of it immediately, so that was wonderful. And the Commissioner actually came by to make sure that there was no overtime. Commissioner is also very kind and so is his department. I think that all the deputies and Jody and all the guys at the Commissioner's department, whenever we tell them, hey, this is really cool, especially the Assessor is very organized. If you look at his screen, it's color-coded, all his meetings are fantastic. And his deputies are even more organized with emails, so they highlight their emails, fonts and such. So, you know, we're impressed by that and they'll show us how to do it. They'll say, let us know when you have time. We'll come up and set you up with that. Same thing goes with the Commissioner, so we're very grateful for that. Thank you very, very much. And that concludes my report. So the next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. Approval of June 18th, 2025 Board of Trustees' regular meetings. Is there a motion to approve the meetings as, to meet, minutes, not meetings, as presented? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Trustee Harney and seconded by Trustee Day. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries and the June 18th, 2025 Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes are approved as presented. The next item is approval of June 26th, 2025 Board of Trustees' special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
A motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Just like one table, one table. All right, so the motion was made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Fixmer. Is there any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake? Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries and the June 20, uh, June 26th, 2025 Board of Trustees' special meeting minutes are approved as presented. Okay, approval of Treasurer's Report. The next item is the approval of Treasurer's Report. Mister, with us today is Treasurer's Report being presented by Mr. Tom Coghlan from Govern, Governmental Accounting LLC. Mr. Coghlan, thank you for being here, and the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, so we're four months into our fiscal year through June, so 33% of the budget is our benchmark here. The revenue side, short revenue is just over $2 million. Now we're at 36% of the budget right on track.
Do we, do we approve the minutes for the road bridge budget?
Oh, okay, that is what this was, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go back and approve it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Do we want to let them finish?
Yes.
Hearing started?
Yeah, well, I think we should probably stick with the agenda. Stick with, let's get the minutes and then we can go back and.
All right, fine, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, approval of June 2026 minutes from the public hearing. Sorry, I just thought it was the same item from before, but it's actually the Commissioner's public hearing meetings. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second, please? Okay, the motion is made by Trustee Harney and seconded by Trustee Day. Is there a discussion? Okay, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, we come back to you now. Go ahead, Tom, sorry.
So total revenues so far through June, just over $2 million, 36% of the budget. So right online, we saw the first big installment from county government, so it's actually within that 50% of the budget. On the expense side, total expenses so far, $1,158,000, that's like 21% of the budget. We know that percentage pulled down a bit by the budget of transfers between funds, capital, large projects that occurred, yes. So looking at our major drivers, salaries, other things like that, everything's pretty much right at or just below that 33% benchmark. So everything's on track so far through those first four months. So currently, the township is sitting at a surplus of $871,090, so it's to be expected with that big installment from the county. Current fund balance just drives $6 million. We're at $5,986,856, so all good through the first four months. Looking at our bank accounts between the accounts at First American Bank and Noma House, we're sitting at a book balance there of $5,944,658. All good so far. Nothing I'd like to report. If there's any other questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Coghlan. Are there any questions from the board? All right, so is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report as presented?
A motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Harney. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
The motion carries and the Treasurer's Report is hereby approved as presented. Okay, the next item on the agenda is audit and approval of bills. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
No, because, yeah, there are two bills that, well, this is for Road District, is that right?
It's Road District.
Okay, so we do need to approve two bills? The two bills? We need to approve them?
So this is all, this is all the bills for the whole month?
I know, but over $7,000.
So they audit the bills, so which bills aren't on the bills list?
Oh, sorry. Maria, can you bring them here? Sorry.
So.
They're over $7,000, right, according to the policy?
Yeah, so they're not on the bills list.
I mean, they should be, because we have not paid them. It's ready to go, but we have not paid them.
Oh, so they're not, so, okay.
Oh, so that's the other month, so these wouldn't be on there yet, right?
Was the check issued or handwritten?
Yeah, just two days ago. They're not handwritten.
Okay, so that is. It's not, it's probably not on the bill report, I think I read that.
Yeah, exactly. So.
So that would be under the mental health board?
Uh, so there's, these are the two bills for that, so should we share? Or?
Yeah, so you can, you can put them on, I mean, they weren't included on the bills list.
No, because it's going to be in the next cycle, but then it'll be late.
So then you can, well, I mean, that's the.
Policy.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll table this to the next meeting. All right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the payment of payroll and bills for Road District General Assistance and Town Fund as presented?
A motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is made by Trustee Day and seconded by Trustee Drake. Is there any discussion? Okay, the motion carries and the payment of bills for Road District General Assistance and Town Fund is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is old business. Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, do the roll call.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yeah.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, so for old business, we have consideration of janitorial services for township offices and cemeteries. I'm see.
So I would present, kind of on what's in the packet, I'm gonna, my idea of getting the terms and conditions.
All right, so everyone has gotten those in their packets already.
The quotes.
Yes, we do have the quotes.
So talk about the quotes and then about the terms and conditions.
Okay, so terms and conditions, Mr. Kimsey will help us with. We do not currently have them.
So it's all the way at the end?
I don't think I have it.
I got it. So there's three?
Right, so there's, this one is for, from the meeting, I believe it is from the 6/18 meeting where we had a, we had approved, from the association's meeting, we, then they approved the higher cost because Carmen hadn't been paid, well, she hadn't had a raise for a very long time, nine years. So they adjusted that and then we had talked about it last meeting that we were going to do the same. So, correct, correct, but at the, so the first, the first page you see here has the retro pays for June and for July. That's totaling $1,000, and then if you go to the very next page. That's same retro also. So it's $1,000 a month from here on out. So the retro is 500 for June and 500 for July, because we've only paid 500 each. And moving forward, we will be at $1,000 a month.
And so, go, go ahead.
Okay, and, go ahead.
It doubled?
So, yes, so she initially charged approximately $33 an hour and then now she is at a double, yeah. She has not had a raise in nine years. Actually, the rate was supposed to be more. We negotiated it down because of our budget being already done. So the consideration will also come back up again at the next fiscal.
Nine years gets a double rate. I think you were raising her salary.
Do you recall, Trustee Harney brought up the point last time from the association meeting that Mr., the president of the association had two quotes? I also submitted another quote on top this time around, so all those three quotes are higher than her rate currently, even after the double.
And so I'll just add that there was, the invoice, the proposal was submitted, there wasn't any kind of like terms and conditions. So, I mean, my advice would be that, you know, we prepare kind of our standard list of terms and conditions and get those for approval. So when a motion is made, we'd ask that it be subject to final attorney review and approval, so we could do that and get this signed with that, so, and I have to.
Is the condo association paying retro pay too? They paid, they paid earlier, so. At 500 a month and they're. Their, their, their quantity, their, their bills are different because it's different. Yeah. It's different parts of the building, so I can't remember what, what their bills are, but, yeah, we approved an immediate increase.
No, we have to talk about the cemetery. I suppose we should go into this?
I think you can do it all.
It was a lot more. Alan Evans is the president. Alan Evans is the president of the condominium board. He had gotten two different quotes. We had three quotes. Fresh cleaning was the best quote by far. And then I believe Supervisor Shaw said that she got another quote that also was more than this. So essentially, this is what the market is demanding. And so if we want our places cleaned, I suspect we will have to pay this.
Yes, yes. So Maria, do you have the cemetery quote? We have duplicates here.
Cemetery, um.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh.
It would be the cleaning quote.
Oh.
Right.
Cemetery.
If I can borrow her for a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you. Charity, do you have it? Have you guys been sharing?
No.
Okay. All right, do you want to look at it real quick?
Yeah, if I could, yeah.
All right. So while you guys are looking at it, can I talk about the cemetery quote?
Sure.
All right, okay, so the situation with the cemetery is, I believe we got the video. I'm under the impression the video was shared nevertheless. So the way cemetery is designed, it's a picture of this room, so the intake, there's a door right there. You have intake in the main office, okay? So everyone that comes in, whether they're paying for burials, whether they're paying for lots, whatever, what columbarium area, whatever it may be, it, they sit right there and then back there, it's, it's closed, but back there is their break room. But there's a hallway right in the middle, kind of like where that door is, where the bathroom is. So what happens is everybody that goes to, so both, so the break room and the offices, they're both exposed to the bathroom. So with the result, so far, our, our crew, cemetery crew has been cleaning, but we have sanitation issues that need to be addressed, okay? Meaning after every time when we have a resident that is a paying customer also that comes in and uses the washroom, the cemetery sometime, more than, more than sometimes, has to go and clean up after them. So that's quite, and it's not presentable. You can also imagine if I have, I'm sorry, so, I mean, should I?
Not your fault.
I know, so, I mean, I could.
What were we doing before? We don't need any more details. I mean, who was taking care of cleaning it?
They were. Yeah. Because they're continuously. Because they're continuously, I mean, it's not a part of their job, so that's number one, but number two is also they're continuously having to do that, the upkeep.
Could we maybe get a quote for Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
So we try, okay, so here's... Okay. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the problem with the three days is, you're still going to have residents slash paying customers going through what they have to go through. If you were paying X amount of money...
How many residents are coming in there a week?
Uh, depends, right, so let's say if you have...
Said over a month, he sold how many things, like eighteen?
A thousand?
A thousand, a thousand residents?
Oh, no, a thousand dollars worth, right?
No, but eighteen people came in, is what I'm saying.
Oh.
Twelve.
Well, okay, so twelve people, that doesn't mean that they don't have families with them until, right? It's a cemetery, so usually you get people in, they're not just single.
I feel like if we could do Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then the guys could go in Tuesday, Thursday, and just kinda spot clean?
This is only for half hour, it's not like our offices.
Yeah, it's only a half hour, but it's still almost a thousand dollars.
But cemetery does bring in enough money, okay?
Yeah, that's been said, that we're the ones who make profit, yeah.
So, uh, we don't, we accept substantial profit or anything, not that it's...
And they do have a lot of work.
And even if we did, it would've just unburdened taxpayers.
I think three days a week would be significant enough.
So...
Can we try for three days and see?
How, how we go? How about we do that for three months and we reconvene, or, uh, right, the third meeting, I should say, not three months. So, this meeting, next meeting, and the meeting after that, we will reconvene, so for right now, we'll do three, uh, three days a week? Alright, so Carmen, can I please have the three, uh, three days quote that you have?
Do you have that quote? I think she only has two days, but that should be...
No, I think she has three, and she adjusted it with the federal holidays also, guys, okay?
What you got, Carmen?
Yeah. You have two?
I have two.
We worked on three, okay, that's fine.
Oh, yours is three days a week?
Three days, and I was with this one, it's five days.
Oh, so you do have three days?
Three days.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we want.
Doesn't match.
Yeah.
That's five hundred, and this says nine sixteen.
So this one says, uh, twice per week, current schedule is Monday, seven, oh, this is assessor and supervisor, sorry. Okay, let me see, please. No, not the assessors, we just want the cemetery right now.
Cemetery, yeah.
So three days cemetery, so you have three seventy-five here? This is...
What's the original, um, quote I gave you?
No, this is five days.
Five days, but it's only five hundred?
Yeah, because what's the original?
Instead of nine?
So, this is five days for five hundred?
Yeah, a hundred days.
Hundred and eight?
One hundred for day, for visit.
For five days?
A hundred dollars per day.
Yeah, but it's five a week, right?
That's not bad for...
Yeah, but that's, uh, that's supposed to be monthly, right?
It's a monthly.
Yeah, that's a monthly. Yeah.
Yeah, I got you, I could, took me a second.
Sorry, my bad.
So... Yeah, but this is...
For the, this is for the building, right?
This is for the cemetery.
No, cemetery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's per visit, okay, and then that one is per month.
It's, no, it can't be five hundred dollars per visit.
No, it's, uh, five days, it's five days per week, so per visit is a hundred dollars. Then we negotiated down to that, for a month.
So it was, it was a thousand, and they negotiated to nine sixteen?
Betcha, betcha.
For five days.
A week, for a month.
Yeah, I still think that three days a week is funny.
No, I think that, I think we're trying to figure that out.
So we wanna do three seventy-five?
I think I can do three days and nights.
Three seventy-five a week?
For three days?
Yes. Okay, so three days a week?
Three seventy-five a week, that's a, that doesn't math, three seventy-five a week doesn't math. That's nine sixteen for a month, three seventy-five a week doesn't math for that.
Well, so this is supposed, how will that, how will three seventy-five, three days a week be for one month?
What I'm saying is, what is that other quote that she has over there?
Nine sixteen.
The five hundred per...
It's like, I'm trying to do math, but here's...
If a hundred dollars a visit would be three hundred dollars a week?
Yeah.
And then if you figure four weeks, it'd be twelve hundred every four weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be five forty, five forty-nine would be a month.
Might as well take the five...
Would be pro rata, right? So five, divided by, divide nine sixteen by five, and then times it by three, and then you're getting essentially sixty percent, right? Because she's working sixty percent of the time, so it'd be five forty-nine.
So then it's a better deal to do the...
Yeah.
The whole month.
Well, you're getting a pro rata, I mean, you're getting extra cleaning for her.
And that's, again, it's adjusted to all the federal holidays, so we worked on that, it was initially supposed to be more, but we worked a lot of, we worked a lot, multiple different quotes with her.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm actually feel like if you work in college, and she's a waitress.
Sure. Okay, so do you want, you guys have that nine sixteen quote?
Yes, we do, I did.
Okay, alright.
Yes, you're awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, um, shall we go ahead and...
Yeah, so if you wanna do...
Less, to do five days a week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay?
It saves us. It's just a lot of work, and there are already moments.
That'd be the total.
Yeah. Okay, so, the motion for the contract with Fresh Cleaning Services LLC for cleaning services of the township spaces and cemetery... In the, in the amount of nineteen sixteen, right, total? Per month, retroactive to June one, uh, twenty twenty-five and July, right, for five hundred?
Retroactive to June twenty, June first.
One, to, to, to June first, uh, subject to final attorney review and approval, uh, can we get a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, a second. Okay, um, so the motion has been moved by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Day, um, and the motion carries for...
Nope.
Discussion.
Oh, we're gonna do a dis...
Discussion and then roll call.
Okay, so discussion, any...
So why are we retroactivating?
Oh, that was for the supervisor and assessors, remember?
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
But we need to be clear that we're not being retroactive on the cemetery.
No, because cemetery is brand new.
Yeah, it's not, the service wasn't provided.
But we included in the motion that it was retroactive, and we're just voting on the cemetery, we're not voting on anything else, so the motion is that it's flawed.
No, we're voting on both, but the retro, oh, go ahead.
I think the idea is that, that you're voting on the prices for service performed.
For all three things?
For all, right, nineteen sixteen per month, and since, obviously, they won't, cemetery wasn't provided in June, the prices are retroactive to June. Does that make sense? So she's not gonna invoice you for the, the work that she did, and you wouldn't approve of anything, so...
Okay, yes.
So the retro is only for supervisor, assessor's offices?
For the work that was performed.
Yes, right.
That was, correct, yes.
I, I hadn't understood, I thought we were just voting on the cemetery now, I thought we were gonna vote on each one separately.
So both of them, no.
But now it's all three of them, okay, yeah.
Yeah, alright, so, is that, is that good?
Yeah, just, if anything, any other discussion?
Any other discussion? Okay, alright, then the motion carries, uh, madam clerk?
Just give it a roll call.
Madam clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
No.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Alright, so the motion carries... For the cemetery assessor and, um, supervisor's offices cleaning.
You are on to...
And then, we are on to, this is long.
Yeah.
Alright, so we are on to consideration for township.
The resolution to adopt the policy.
Do you want to table this one?
Yeah, so if you wanna table it, if you want me to talk about it first, or then, see what they wanna do, it's up to you.
Um... Should we talk, or...
Why don't you see if you wanna...
Alright, fine. Okay, so, um, resolution to adopt a policy to provide additional assistance under Dundee Township General Assistance Program. So a copy of resolution was included in the board packet. And, um, should we have a motion?
So you can see if there's any motions, if someone wants to table it, they can table it, or if you wanna get a motion to approve it.
Alright, shall we have a motion, or should we table it? Shall we have a motion for that? For the resolution of, um, additional assistance under General Assistance Program?
We can't talk about this ahead of time?
So we can, I think, you should get a motion first, you should get a motion, a second, and then discussion.
Almost.
Then go to table.
I will second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, alright, so the motion is made by trustee Day and, uh, seconded by trustee Harney, uh, is there any discussion?
Yes, there is discussion.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll start here, um, this, this concerns me on a couple of levels, um, the fact, I think we are facing severe economic headwinds coming up. And I think we have to be very, very careful with, not only just what we're spending right now, but what we anticipate in the future. The other thing, and earlier, we talked with, with the attorney about this, the supervisor has enormous authority under the current GA policy. And, um, the last supervisor changed that, uh, changed the scope of services and reduced it to only helping out with people who, um, were being evicted or close to being evicted. Uh, before that, for years and years, if someone needed a tow to get their car out of something, or, um, or food, or medicine, or, um, you know, diapers, or, or whatever they needed, as they, as long as they qualified as either an emergency assistance client or a general assistance client, the supervisor had full authority to spend, and the supervisor sets the limit for that. Um, when I was supervisor, the limit for general assistance was six hundred dollars a month, I did not go to the board at that time and did not need to, and, um, and that was the limit that was, that, that was observed. Um, we had other limits for emergency assistance, so much for a family of four, so much, you know, we changed it a few times. But the idea was that if somebody needed something and they needed it instantly, um, I remember one time we paid insurance, an insurance premium for an individual because he was in danger of losing his insurance. And so it would've been far better for us to pay that as an emergency assistance thing, which we did, thereby he kept his medical insurance, thereby he got well, and thereby he was able to work again. So there, as I said, large latitude here, it can be rent, it can be medicine, it can be food, it can be diapers, it can be clothing, just, you know, you, you have that authority already. The difference between what this resolution calls for and what you currently have is if the person qualifies either under emergency assistance or general assistance. And that is my concern, I'm fully supportive of whatever you wanna do to expand the current scope of, of assistance, I, I would hope that you would do that. Um, but I'm also very concerned, as I said, about the headwinds we're facing economically as a country. And so before we leap into this next much larger, much more, um, easily used up level of spending, let's get our feet on the ground just with expanding with the current, the power that you currently have. And I applaud you for reconsidering that, I, I was not overly happy at, at the reduction before, but again, this is the supervisor's program. We, you do not answer to this board with whatever you do, this is what you choose to do within reason. My other concern with this is, and this goes back to the budget, if we expand the scope of the program, as this, this ordinance would allow us to do, and we run out of money down the road, when another qualified general assistance client comes in, no matter what they need, we are required by law to pay it. My office administrator, when I was supervisor, her name was Liz Gotti, and she called it the brain transplant case, we never had one. But if someone comes in and needs multiple transplants, and they qualify under general assistance, the township is obligated by court decisions to pay for that with, at Medicaid rates. We carry insurance for that, but, not the case anymore, oh, good, that's good to know. Okay, but, but there again, you know, if we get to the end of, of the money that we have in the account, we still have to accept clients that are qualified, and we have to help them. And if we expand the scope of this, then I guess that's a question for you, Mike, then do we have to help them with expanded scope?
Yeah, ab, well, not with the expanded scope, only the mandatory portions of general assistance. So, so traditional general assistance, um, is very narrow, right, it's, it's the assistance of last resort, because, uh, you can't qualify for any other program. So, it used to be the only type of aid, right, that there was back in the eighteen hundreds, and then during the New Deal, um, FDR put forward all these categorical types of assistance, right? At first it was for elderly people and young people and, uh, the blind, and then other people with disabilities, right, they liked the blind at first. Um, and so, and now it's things like SNAP and those programs, you can't be eligible for those programs, if you're not eligible for those programs, you may be eligible for general assistance. Right, so it's the program of last resort, but there's very strict eligibility requirements, um, in order to qualify for those programs, in terms of income, which is set by the supervisor, but also, you know, categorical, if you receive some other type of aid, you are disqualified. So I think the idea behind this program would be, it's a discretionary program, uh, that frees up, uh, general assistance dollars to be spent, um, kind of in the same way that, uh, town fund dollars could be spent, um, you know, granting them to agencies that help, uh, in addition to just providing individuals help. I mean, it's, it's very, very broad and flexible what could be done, and the board could grant very broad, broad and flexible powers, or very specific powers to the supervisor in this discretionary.
But we, we, one question, we can, at this point, right now, without passing this, this thing, we can, we can, the board can say, we can set aside money from the general fund to pay out to organizations like PADS, is that not correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
No, oh, could we explain for the public what powers or what, um, categories would be added in this?
Yeah, so, well, what, what would be added in what?
In this resolution, the dental, um, the carto, like, what, what will be there that wasn't there before, so that people understand?
Well, I think that's perhaps a question for the supervisor.
Sure, so I can take that, so, say for example, um, I, I know, I don't know the correct terminology they use right now for, is it unhoused people? Alright, so, alright, unhoused folks, that, let's say if we, uh, gave, uh, X amount of, helped with X amount of beds at PADS. These unhoused people didn't get there because they have a savings account, because they have a car, because they have a job, they have good help. There was a tremendous amount of prices that, uh, put them there with absolutely nothing. So now, if we just help with PADS, you've got temporary housing, where does it get them? So is our money actually, how, how far is it helping them get back on their feet? Can we help them, like, for example, there is a, a woman that we, we have heard of, uh, I don't know her personally, but she had a stroke, she lost her job, she was immobile, she now cannot further do anything, the rehab is only for a month, they don't, rehabs are, I don't know how it used to be before, but I've only known of rehabs, uh, from past few years from family members. And they don't actually bring you back to what you used to be, so you still, more than oftentimes, require additional assistance. So this will help you with that, okay, or not?
You could already do that, and, uh, what you've described is somebody who is a GA client already, or could be?
No, so, we, we...
Not necessarily.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on if they meet the qualifications for GA, which again are restrictive, right, I mean, if they have income or they have assets that are over a certain level, right, then, then they would not be eligible. And it's not even, I mean, it's, it's, they're very, they're very low.
And they're like asset requirements, right?
So this program, for example, will help, uh, help us, uh, we, we help them with transportation, it will help them with therapy, I believe possibly even a gym, okay, if they need to get their strength back. It will help them with mental health, it can help them with training to get back on their feet, and, uh, can help with assistance needed to get a job, and, like, you can do a full circle. Which we are not doing, so then investing in just PADS, how is it making the best use of taxpayer dollars? It's not going to be five hundred dollars, right, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so... That's the question.
We can still, out of the general fund, we can do that, and with the, transportation for anyone like that is available through the Ridenkane program.
Well, okay, for them, for example, okay, but there are a lot of people who do not qualify necessarily under that circumstances, what do you do with them? So let's say, for example, if you have someone who needs, uh, whose children need dental, right? So let's say, for example, if you have someone who needs, whose children need dental, right? The state doesn't necessarily cover that. How do you help them?
And that's where it becomes a budget question. Because at some point, the need is so much greater than we have resources.
Right, so that's why we set limits, right? We did not, we went so far, we have just gone along with the limits the previous administration had. So we have not yet set our limits, okay?
But you can set them anytime, you can-
Correct, but what we have is bare minimum, is what I'm saying right now. We can just continue, that's not what I'm, I'm just saying that I'm not asking for a limit to be increased right now, okay? There's no need for that right now.
But we have no control over the limit. You set the limit entirely at your discretion.
I understand that, but I don't have any type of an assessment that tells me that I have a need for a higher limit right now.
Yeah, I think maybe her point is that she could set the limit very high, right? And she could spend on the fund like that. What she prefers to do is to maybe broaden, because she doesn't see a need for, right? So for GA at this time, I think is what I'm understanding.
Correct. So that is the basic idea here. So we can either table it, like, I want everybody to feel comfortable with this, right? Okay, but we can either table it, there is need in the community, there's substantial need. I can tell you that much, okay?
I think we all agree on that.
Yes, so that said-
What you may want to do is to table and have someone come in and talk about kind of other programs that are in other townships, right? That where they have those kinds of things, and you can see those kind of controlled programs.
And if you could, you know, just what you're gonna do now, I mean, expand this, you know? And because a lot of the things that I saw in here, you know, several of them, you could do unilaterally right now and everything. Now, there are other things in there, there's like weatherization for housing, which, you know, again, once it goes in there and once that's approved, that's up to your discretion. Well, we weatherized three houses and we've probably pretty much shot our budget, you know? So that's the quandary. Now, again, with PADS, I am all in on a motion from the general fund to designate an amount of money for PADS. That is a service that, I think that's within our parameters.
It is, it is. But, see, so tell me this, how will PADS be actually beneficial for that person, for, let's say, a subject, okay? If they're only, if you're only giving them temporary housing, but there's no other assistance given?
I, you know, I have to, I don't know. We are, again, not in a position as a township with money to offer that full slate of holistic health. I wish we were. I think the mental health board is in a position to do that. You know, they are, and that's one of the, some of the things that they've talked about with different providers. Because those providers like family services. So that is already, our taxpayers are already paying for that level of assistance.
And then there's assistance through Kane County, which Chris just talked about. There's dental assistance there. I mean, you're also very new at your job. I think that we probably just need to get a really good grasp on general assistance in general before you start broadening into all these other things.
Maybe we could talk about this during the budget. You know, we'll be doing our budget in the fall. Let's give ourselves time as a board to get our feet on the ground and to find out what we can do and what we can't do, and make the changes. Because I would, again, encourage you to do that.
Yeah.
And then look at it at that point, look at it from what our objectives are, but also look at it from the point of the budget. Because these things, the need is huge in this township. And I think it's going to get significantly larger. And at some point, you know, there will be a limit. The taxpayers impose limits on us on what we can offer. So I think we're better off advancing slowly on this and cautiously. And then, and so maybe what I would like to do is reconsider this during the budget, our budget process, which is in the fall.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's a good idea.
So how do we table this?
So you get a motion to table.
Okay, so can we get a motion to table this item?
To a future board meeting.
To a future board meeting?
I'll do that.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by trustee Harney and seconded by trustee Fixmer, and the resolution has been tabled until a future meeting. And, oh my God, I keep doing that today, don't I? Because it's almost nine o'clock, I'm sorry.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Trey?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.
Trustee Harney?
Yes.
Supervisor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries for tabling of resolution for GA expansion until a future meeting. New business on the agenda, so... Okay, so staffing reconsideration. So we have staffing reconsideration to executive session portion of the meeting. Can, right?
Yeah, so if you want to get a motion to-
Can we get a motion to move into executive session, right?
So you're gonna get a motion to amend.
Amend, okay.
The agenda, so to move it afterward, if you want to talk about an executive.
Do we want, okay, fine.
Or you can talk about it in an open session, it's up to you, what do you want to talk about?
I mean, we can, right?
You can.
I mean, the people would be a part of it.
Sure.
Okay, so can we just continue? Or, okay, can we get a motion to amend though, right?
No, no, you don't have to, you can just talk.
All right, so then we can just talk about this right now, the reorg. All right, so first we have to get the motion, right?
Yeah, well, so what do you have as a proposal?
So for, as far as a proposal, we were supposed to touch base again at this meeting with the reorg plan, where we wanted to, initially had proposed that we do cross-training. And now with John, we have seen that it has been very beneficial. So should we, this is not about pays or anything, we've already done a lot of that. At this point, we just want to, we just want to talk about a reorganization as well as possibly John's salary coming out of cemetery fund, since the open spaces, I don't want to overwhelm them even, I do think that they have the monies for it, but if we could do that, that's fine, because cemetery only has three people versus their budget is slightly bigger than, yes. So budget, John's salary should come out of the cemetery. And we would like to finish, wrap up the cross-training of all members. It won't happen immediately, okay? So, as time permits.
So you get a motion to approve those two things?
So can we get a motion to approve those two items?
Our motion to discuss.
Well, so, I mean, so you get a motion, you get a second, you can vote it down, you can vote at the table after.
We haven't voted.
So in order to discuss, you need to get a motion to approve. So you can vote no later.
All right, our motion to approve.
Okay, and can we get a second to discuss?
But then you gotta amend it anyway, so you gotta just, you can vote it down.
I'll second that again.
Okay, so the motion to discuss the reorg has been made by trustee Day and seconded by trustee Harney. Is there a discussion?
Why are we paying John out of cemetery if he's working in open space?
Open spaces only was budgeted for two people, right?
So then, if we don't need him in open space and he's needed in cemetery?
He is needed there, as you saw.
Reorganize that and put him back.
No, you heard Kirby say that he's a fantastic addition. He helps.
Right, but if-
But they're, he's cross-trained.
If he's working in open space, he should be paid out of open space. That doesn't-
The reason for cross-training was that we can utilize them either or, right?
Correct.
So we don't have to do a budget amendment.
But what you're asking for is to pay him out of the cemetery budget instead of the open space budget, even though he's working in open space.
So can we do that?
You do the opposite, right? You want to pay him from open space.
We want, no, we want to pay him from cemetery. Cemetery, we have less people right now, we have more money there, okay? And we don't want to deplete open space.
So you can-
But you can't do that.
You can't?
No.
If they're cross-trained?
But you could transfer money up to 10% of, like, through line, I mean, that would be a Tom question.
Which, yeah.
So if I may?
Yeah.
Trustee Harney had asked me to kind of put together an analysis, I actually fit a term meeting.
Yeah.
It's rough, but I'm confident with just the salary number. So looking at the nine pay grades that have happened from the beginning of the fiscal year till the last pay grade and projecting out the remaining 17, it looks like the cemetery with the new organization, reorganization, should come in about $65,000 under budget. Open space would be $20,000 over budget. So the net of those two is $45,000 of savings to township overall. I don't know, we can, like, Mr. Kim said, we can transfer between lines. But even if there's just some way to get through this fiscal year since the budget was in place before this organization, and then always clean things up, as Justice Harney said, that next budget process, that's always an option to-
So let me rephrase the question then, yeah.
What he's saying is you don't need to do that yet, you have money, right? And if at the end, you gotta do a cleanup amendment at the end of the year to make sure that you're, right? To balance the book, right, to shift money, then that would be okay.
Okay, so what would qualify as a hybrid model where we could take money from either or?
I don't think-
Would it be half and half?
Right, you just have to budget it.
From either or, or from one place?
Yeah, I mean, you can pay him from both places, right? You just, you just can't shift it back and forth or put him somewhere where he's not. If he's doing duties, right, for somewhere, then you can come up with some sort of model like that. But it'll be fixed in the next budget year, right, when you sit down and do the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, okay, then cross-training part of the rest of them, do we want to? What do we, what do we think about that?
I have a trouble with this whole thing. I think that John belongs at the cemetery, solely at the cemetery, with the occasional trading back and forth that we do with all the departments. And here's the reason why. We, what we need in the open space department is someone to do the grant writing, to do the ordering, to do the volunteer coordination. That was something I thought we had budgeted for in open space, for a part-time person. We need, there's nobody doing that right now. Before Katie did it, I did it for, when I was supervisor. But we have nobody who is doing that office work, and as I said, writing grants, setting up. I mean, I looked at Libertyville Township's website, and one of the things that is, has been driving me crazy for quite some time, is we don't have site plans for our open space sites. A site plan is an analysis of the physical characteristics of a site. It's divided into sections, wetlands, woodlands, prairie, whatever. And that site plan then has a list of objectives, and that's a complicated thing to do. We don't have those anymore for any of our open space sites. And this office person needs to do it. That position requires someone who has a background in land management, who has hands-on experience with open space like Kirby does. Kirby is already, wait, he is, his time is totally tied up doing things on the ground. We need a different person in the open space department. And so I would, am in favor of putting John solely back in the cemetery. It looks like the budget will accommodate that. It's not that there isn't enough work in open space, it's just that the priority from my perspective is absolutely to get somebody in charge, to map out a five-year plan, to map out a one-year plan, you know, and to coordinate with the volunteers. All of that is an office-type of job, and it requires somebody who has expertise in that area. I've checked into the salaries for people like that. We can hire a full-time person that does those kinds of things out of college for something in the neighborhood of $65,000 a year. Now, that's a little more, I mean, I don't know that that's possible at this point, but again, it's something we can look at in the budget. But I, I'm a little muddy on, cross-training is all great, but I don't think you need a motion to do that. But I do think, as I said, the motion should be to put John back in the cemetery and have him paid out of the cemetery funds, and have him work there full-time.
And if he's needed in open space to like mow a lawn or like he did in the cemetery, we just-
Yeah, work that out between the two department heads.
But we can't be paying him in the cemetery if he's working in open space.
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Kim, do you make that clear?
I don't know what that looks like in terms of the motion that's on the floor.
Well, so I mean, do you have a call vote on it? If you want to call a vote on it?
Yeah, could we read the motion again? Where do we vote? Would you, Liz, can you read the motion?
Clarify.
Yeah, clarify the motion.
Just a reminder, essentially, Supervisor Shaw wanted to take the salary for John from cemetery and then finish up cross-training for the rest of open space and cemetery.
Right.
That's the motion that's-
Okay, so can we get a motion on that?
Can you get a roll call?
A roll call, please.
Trustee Day?
Wait, so what are we roll calling on, I'm sorry?
You're voting on whether to keep the cross-train, or to cross-train everybody? And to move the salary?
So we're not moving him? Or that's after the vote?
Well, there's not, yeah, there's not a motion on the table.
Okay, no.
Uh, trustee Trey?
No.
Trustee Fixmer?
No.
Uh, trustee Harney?
No.
And Supervisor Shaw?
Yes. Oh, okay, yes. Okay, so the motion for reorganization.
You say just the motion fails is fine. The motion fails is fine.
The most, the motion, or fails, fails. Motion fails. Okay, so then, do we go to the next item for the public hearing?
No, let's go back to this.
Oh, the discussion, oh, yeah.
Can I call a motion to change it?
Until the next budget session.
Ah, so, yeah, go ahead.
Can I, can I call a motion to move John back to cemetery and pay him out of cemetery? Full ta, or part-time?
So why don't we instead do this where we keep him there until we find another person for open space?
That's gonna take time, you're gonna have to do a search.
So what's-
Was he needed in open space?
Yeah, that's why they asked for it.
Was he spent most of his, most of his time?
Open space.
So I mean, it's up, what's up to you, I mean, it's not-
He only went back for one day. Because they have a project happening there, so that was it. So that's where he's needed more? So I don't, until we find another person, an expert or whatever you may want to call him, why don't we leave John there?
Okay.
Okay, so do we need a motion to start a search for an open space?
You don't need a motion.
Okay.
You can.
Okay.
But you could, yeah.
You can ask that for the next agenda, though.
You can ask that that be reflected in the minutes, yeah. And you can ask for the next agenda.
Yeah, and I'm fine with a cross-training. Do you need a motion for that? Okay.
You don't need a motion for the cross.
Okay, all right, fine. So then, this was for keeping John back, we don't even have-
No, you, no, you-
Yeah, we're good, okay, so. Yeah, so the new business, well, that was a consideration. Consideration of a policy workshop meeting?
No, he's, nothing changes for him.
Right, nothing changes right now.
So where should I allocate John's salary this year?
Open space.
Open space, yeah.
Nothing's changing.
Yeah.
So right now he's being paid out of open space.
Yes, and he'll continue doing that, yes.
I wrote down the same thing initially, but the other way versa.
All right, so consideration for policy workshop meeting? The next item for new business is consideration of workshop policy. Is there a motion to approve the policy workshop meeting to be held? When do we want to hold it, though?
It's up to you.
It's a discussion part.
All right, so I will just-
A date in the future?
Or, at a date in-
Hold a policy workshop meeting and then you can set a time.
All right, today's 15th, so August 2nd, I'm just gonna say, okay? All right. No, I understand, but discussion, right? We just have to get to the discussion.
So you could just say, to set a policy workshop meeting?
Okay, so motion to set up policy workshop meeting?
For the second.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is made by supervisor and seconded by trustee Harney. Let's discuss. So we want to have a policy hearing where the public is involved.
Not a hearing, we're having a meeting. Is it a meeting or a hearing?
It's a meeting, right. Okay, so, it's a workshop.
A budget workshop.
A budget workshop, okay, thank you.
We want this to be accessible to the public so that we can fulfill our promises for transparency.
So we're able to hear what they have to say? And then we can consider what they have to say? And amend or adopt policies or drop policies based on that? Okay?
Can we, can we just start with a budget workshop, with a, not a, with a policy workshop? So we just talk about the policies and then do a public hearing, or a public, or-
Well, I think, so here's how I think a policy workshop would work, right? Is you would have the policies on the agenda, the board could discuss them, and then you could have a public comment session, right? And there would be no action taken at that policy workshop.
Okay.
It's a workshop, so that, you know, you can decide what, if any, action to take in a future board meeting.
Okay, so do we need to have a time for that, or?
Yeah, so see if, if anybody has availability, get a consensus, then amend the motion, and then-
To be determined.
To be determined, because I don't have my calendar, I can't tell you when I'm available.
Um, if we set, I mean, we can change it, right, then? Um, if we set a meeting, we can change it, right, then?
No, you have to.
And then if we don't set it, then it doesn't happen until next meeting.
Correct. Well, you could, yeah, I mean, so you can either, you could table it, just table the motion, and if you wanna come back next time and set it.
Why don't we say a policy workshop in the month of August, specifically date to be in August?
Can we do that?
That's what I was gonna say, if you just table it to next month, then you can set the date at the August meeting for September, September.
Okay, but that's so far along.
But I think that would give us some time to become, familiarize ourselves more-
Okay, that's fine.
And also to compare what other townships have, and also just to be clear that everything aligns with the legalities.
All right, so is there a policy workshop, um, what is that?
Just table, table.
So we're just gonna table the motion, and, or I'll ta, table the policy workshop meeting until the next board meeting?
To the August meeting.
Yes, okay.
And that's a motion?
There would be a motion, but the supervisor-
You need a motion?
Yeah, so-
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so the motion was made by Supervisor and seconded by Trustee Harney. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Day?
Yes.
Trustee Drake?
Yes.
Trustee Fixmer?
Yes.